Wasn't coming, man. I said, nah, I gotta hear this.
Hmm.
I wasn't coming.
Oh, you aren't.
I never would you no more ribbon cutting dinner.
Hmm?
Did I go with you in ribbon cutting media?
I don't know if we already had anything.
Funny, you'd have the Catholic channel on all day.
The old.
Yeah. You did. They'd have like Catholic priests come and talking about so Catholic priest talk show. Was that something?
I didn't either.
Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Please be advised that Councilmember Johnson will not be in attendance and has been excused. Our first topic for discussion this afternoon will be an update of the roadway construction and capital projects. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This afternoon's presentation will cover the ongoing capital improvements and projects throughout the city. And will be presented by the Director of Capital Programs, Gary Jones, the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Furlough, Assistant Director of Public Works, Daryl Lewis, and the Director of Public Utilities, Paul Wirtel. At this time, Gary will lead us off. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As the manager stated, we have quite an update for you this afternoon, so we're gonna keep it moving pretty quickly. We have a lot of projects going on in various stages of construction design, so I'll get right into it. Let's see. Let's start with some fire station projects, fire department projects, starting with fire station number 11. As you know, this one is well under construction. This will be our largest station in the city, largest standalone station with four bays, 21,000 square feet of space, including a training and community room. It's about 95% complete. Well, it's probably more like 98% complete. And as you know, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that one later this month on the 18th, so looking forward to that. Total project budget on this one is $12.1 million, and I'm pleased to say that we're on the budget and on time. Next project is the fire station for replacement. I like to refer to this project, and the chief does too, as the little station that could, where the little station can't anymore, so it's about time to replace it. We're gonna replace it with another station, very similar to the one we're doing in North Suffolk, four bay station, just under 20,000 square feet. We're currently in the design phase at about 30%, and also in the stages of negotiating final land acquisition with the city of Portsmouth, so we're looking at wrapping that up pretty soon. We're looking at completing design sometime in the first of the year, February timeframe, and going into construction in the spring and finishing construction sometime in the spring of '27. Estimated budget for this one is $2.9 million. Another fire project is the fire training burn building down on Carolina Road in our operations complex. This is an 8,500 square foot, four-story training facility that allows fire and rescue to train in the many aspects of the services they provide. It's under construction and about 40% complete, moving along very nicely. The contractor is MB Con, and we'll be finished this one around the end of the year. And total project budget on this one is $6.6 million. And the library. I've been talking about this one for a mighty long time, but I'm not gonna talk about it much longer anymore. It's about there. This 38,000 square foot, two-story building right here on Washington Street, everybody sees it going up every day. I watch it every day and I smile every day, so. It's going very well. It's about 55, 60% complete. ET Gresham is the contractor. It'll be finished right around Christmas time. Then we'll move in first of the year and looking at around a March 1st opening to the public. Total project budget's $25.1 million. And new downtown parking. I showed the festival park because it, along with some of the projects we do in the downtown, parking comes along with them, which you know, parking is a much talked about subject downtown and something we always like to add to the inventory when we can. Just like the library project I just talked about, we'll be adding 41 spaces with that library project, and with the park project, we've added 40 spaces. And it provides access from Jackson and Saratoga Street. This leads me to another parking project we have underway, which is called Saratoga East Parking Lot. This project is located just behind the SunTrust Building and Pilot Building that we recently purchased. We will be redoing that parking lot to include better lighting, landscaping, better efficiency as far as the circulation for vehicles. It's underway with design right now. We're looking at finishing that in the spring of the, spring of 2026, and we have a budget of $750,000 for that. Back in April, I talked about the Godwin Courthouse renovations and a many phases, many phased approach that we'll be taking to get that done. Well, this is the first phase of that, is the renovation of the first floor of the Pilot Building to accommodate the first phase of renovation of the courthouse building, which is to relocate the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to the first floor of the Pilot Building along with some police administrative offices on the first floor. The second floor will remain untouched. It will continue to house the Workforce Development Center and some of the other city officers on the second floor. We're looking at completing Phase One, which is the first floor of the Pilot Building, in December of '26. And total project budget for that first phase is just over $3 million. And the remaining phase is to be determined as we get into our CIP in the upcoming year. Phoenix Bank Stabilization, another project that's been talked about for quite some time. This is a project that has limited scope. What we're doing with this project is actually stabilizing the building. We're not developing any kind of new purpose in it. It's simply to stabilize the structure so that we can have a good, solid base to work from in the near future as we decide to, what the ultimate function of this building will be. The work is underway. As you've seen, if you've been going down Washington Street, you've seen the work underway. It's about 20% complete. The work will be complete in November of this year. Total cost right now is about $200,000. Train Station Museum Flood Repairs and Renovation. This project came out of a unfortunate accident. We had a flood from a faulty backflow preventer in the attic that created quite a bit of flood damage on the first floor. And we took the opportunity to go ahead and make some changes when we did the repairs, to make some changes that tourism wanted to make, to have a better flowing museum circulation, to better serve the public as they tour that building. This project is about 80% complete. We're doing this with all in-house services, annual contracts, to keep the cost down. We spent about $350,000 on this one, and it's about 80% complete. It's, we're wrapping it up in the next 30 to 45 days, and then we'll be working on getting, getting the staff moved back into the facility and open to the public shortly thereafter. The homeless shelter, which I've talked about a little bit. Of course, it's a renovation of the Old Regal Inn Motel on Pruden Boulevard. It's an 18-room, 37-bed facility. Once it's complete, it's about 70% complete now. Another project that we're doing with annual services contracts, it'll be finished in the fall of this year. And we have a couple of funding sources, a HUD grant, which is about 1 point, just under $1.5 million, and a state, some state funds of about a half million dollars. Pleased to say that once this is complete, this will all be done with non-local dollars, so that's a big plus. Police Training Center, Huaylaveville. This is the old Huaylaveville Community Center Building adjacent to the Huaylaveville Fire Station number eight. It is to renovate the old community center to become training, a permanent training facility for the police department, for their outdoor canine training as well as their tactical training inside with a simulator system that they already have in place. This work is underway. Plans are 95% complete and going through final review right now. We're planning on starting work within the next 45 days or so, and we finish the work in the spring of '26. $2.5 million budget for this one. Driver Elementary School Demolition. This one is, of course, the school's closed this building and reverted the property back to the city. The city has no plan to use for the building, so we will be demolishing the structure. It's a 55,000 square foot, single-story school constructed in 1968. We've already recently removed the mobile units that were there, so we'll demolish the main building. We'll be soliciting bids later this month, and we have a total of $620,000 in the budget to deal with this. We will leave the gym building in place. We will not touch that, and the ball fields will also remain intact. John F. Kennedy Middle School. As you know, this is the, I'll say, I won't say the biggest school, but the most expensive school project we've ever done in the city. This one's going along very well, 800-student middle school, which also includes a separate CSEP building and an information technology building. The main school building itself is about 66% complete. The CSEP building and the IT building are both 100% complete. As a matter of fact, the IT building just received the Certificate of Odyssey two weeks ago. The school is still on track to open in the fall of '26 with a total project budget of just over $75 million. And one other note I like to make on that one is their change orders are less than 1% today, so they're doing pretty good on that, from that standpoint. I'll now ask Mark Furlough to come up and talk some parks and recreation projects.
Thanks. Might need this. Afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. So I'll go ahead and dive right in, since Gary's already given us the intro. The first project I'll be talking about is the Pewsville Park Parking Lot Expansion. It's kind of a tongue twister. So what we're looking to do here is add approximately 10 parking spaces to the existing parking lot. This project's currently in design. I believe the purchase order is gonna be cut this week for our engineers to start designing this project, and we're anticipating it to be complete in the winter of 2026. The next project is Turlington Park Replacement. We, this project is complete. We put in, this, this playground was installed in the fall of 2024. Mariestus Park Walking Path. This is, this project is to construct a quarter-mile walking path around the playground at Mariestus Park. Right now, we're obtaining construction estimates, and we're anticipating this project to be complete in the fall of 2025. The next project is the Idi Easter Picnic Shelter. This project is also complete. We constructed a two-table picnic shelter at Idi Easter Park. The East Washington Corridor Improvement. This is part of annual projects where we're looking at improving the corridors that come into downtown Suffolk. And we have, we've ordered new site furnishings, that's benches, planters, and trashcans for the East Washington Corridor. And we've also gotten a grant for some addition, for some trees to be planted along that corridor. And that's gonna be the initial phase of this project. We're anticipating all that stuff to be installed in the fall of 2025. Bennett's Creek Park Boat Ramp Replacements. There are, currently, there's three boat ramps at Bennett's Creek Park. There's two older ramps that have been there for a number of years, and then there's a newer one that was put in just a few years ago. So what we're looking at doing now, so the two older ramps are in need of being replaced. We did some maintenance to them a couple of years ago to help kind of extend the life, but they're really in need of being replaced. We're just beginning design. We're anticipating this project to be completed in fall of 2026. Lake Mead Park. This project was to resurface tennis courts one through six and replace the playground equipment. The tennis courts have been completed, and we're anticipating that the playground replacement will be done, will be completed in the summer of 2025. That's a typo. It should be 2025, this summer, not next year. I know a lot of people feel like it's gonna be next year. Lone Star Lakes Park Road Paving. Back in 2019, we paved the roads in the southern portion of the park, and now we're coming back and paving the northern section of the park. This is gonna be broke, probably broke up into two phases, because we're also replacing the boat ramp at Finger Lake. So right now, design is at 100%, and we're just waiting for those plans to come back from planning, and then we'll be going out to bid for Phase One. And we're anticipating this project to be, Phase One of this project to be completed in spring of 2026. This project has a budget of about $1.9 million. It also includes relocating the road to where it's starting to erode into one of the lakes. Holly Lawn Cemetery Expansion. So this project is to construct roads to open up the last section of the cemetery for burials. Right now, we're scoping the design, and we're anticipating completion in fall of 2027, and the budget for this project is $286,000. Cedar Hill Slope Stabilization. This is another project that is done, and it looks really good. If you haven't had a chance to go out there, you can see what we've done for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail in between the train station and the Hilton Garden Inn. We, we took three sections that we, the slope was eroding significantly, and we reinforced those sections with plantings and grading and some stormwater features. In fact, if you see this area right here, or I'm sorry, this area right here, we had to put up like a retaining wall, and you could see one of the vaults for a grave poking through. It's just behind that wall, so that's how bad that erosion was getting. So we're really happy that we've got that protection, that this project completed and those, those slopes are protected. Constance North Park. This project is to construct a passive park at one of the gateways to downtown. Construction, we're in construction. We're about 15% complete. We're anticipating this project to be completed in the fall of 2025, has a budget of about $1.6 million. And approximately half of that funding is through a grant through the National Park Service. Downtown Festival Park. This is another project that's complete, and we're, we're already doing events out there. We've seen a lot of you out there already at some of our events. We're glad to have you, and we're excited about even continuing that on throughout the, the season. Nazan River Boat Ramp. This project is, is to construct a public boat ramp into the Nazan River and to improve the entrance into the facility. We're in design, and that's about 50% complete right now. We're anticipating this project to be completed in the spring of 2027. It has a budget of about $3.2 million. Driver Athletic Complex. So this project is to construct two baseball/softball fields. Right now, we're scoping the design. We're anticipating this to be complete in the summer of 2027, and this has a budget of $1.5 million. Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. So currently, we have three segments of this trail under design. That's Segment 1, 3A, and 3B. We're really excited about that. We got an opportunity to advance Segment 3A, because they wanted, they, the state thought we could save some money by bidding all three segments out together. We could save money on mobilization, so. We got really lucky that we're getting all three of these built at the same time. We're anticipating these to, we're anticipating these to be completed by the summer of 2027. And then for Segments 3C, that's currently in the planning stage. We were awarded a RACE grant through the federal government, and we're just in that process trying to get those agreements signed, and we're hoping to be able to get this project out to bid later this year or the early part of next year. And then Seaboard West, that's also in the planning stage. We just applied for a transportation, or we're in the process of applying for a transportation alternative grant. We just went through the pre-application project and we got, or pre-application process, and we got some real positive feedback on the project, so. Moving forward then. The last project I have tonight is the Long Acre Park, and this is a new project. What we're looking to do is to construct a regional park in the Chukatack Oakland area of the city. We had some land donated to us by the Glasscock family, and they, their intent was for the park to, the property to be used as a park. So our next step is to, we'll be holding a planning meeting at the Chukatack Fire Department on July 29th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And up next is Daryl Lewis from Public Works.
Say good afternoon to you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Members of Staff. I will continue with, oops, sorry, wrong direction. My updates, and I'll begin with the current design projects. First project up is Route 17 Widening. And this is a, adding an additional lane from Winward lane down to Harborview Boulevard, includes refinements to the signals, pedestrian accommodations. Currently, we are at about the 60% level of design, and after that, we anticipate taking this to the public, having public hearings in the winter of this year. Following that is the Godwin Boulevard Improvements. Again, this is a widening project to widen lanes from two to three lanes, one and a half mile length from Kings Fork Road to the bypass. Also at about 60% development stage of design. And along with this project, also being, they're being designed together is the innovative design at the Suffolk Bypass called the Divergent Diamond Interchange, also 60% development stage. And again, we anticipate by this winter to come to you with a public hearing to give more information on where we are. With the three projects that I just mentioned, I came to you about a month ago mentioning the inflationary impacts to the projects that have caused the estimates to go up. So since that time, we've engaged our consultants, design consultants, to kind of do some value engineering to refine the design and try to find some cost savings. Route 460, this is also a widening project. Extends from Providence, Lake Prince, down to the interchange. Again, it's, it's adding an additional lane in that we're adding entrances, refining traffic signals, also looking at pedestrian accommodations along that corridor. It's early in development at about 30%. Next is Shoulders Hill Road Widening. So this is a continuation of the current design at the intersection. And this is actually two separate projects that will be designed together. And it'll widen Shoulders Hill from the intersection or from Laycock all the way down to Pewsville. And again, it will continue the multi-use path and widen from two to three lanes. We just got the funding for this project, so we anticipate starting design this fall. Next is King's Highway Bridge. As you know, we recently received $3.8 million for this project, and we are ready to start this, so. Starting the next couple of months, we'll begin with first ANIPA geotechnical evaluations and then getting the project designed to the 30% level. Spague Spillway Bridge Replacement. We recently, about a couple of weeks ago, completed the right-of-way phase, so we anticipate advertising this project in the next couple of months, and it's a simple superstructure replacement. I think eventually, the city of Portsmouth is planning to replace the entire spillway. I will now move on to our current projects that are in construction. First project is Holland Road Route 58, and I promise you it will be completed very soon. Outstanding items just left, we have paving, putting in all the fiber optics down the median so that all the lights can be connected and the traffic signals. Then I have Shoulders Hill at Bridge Road Improvements. Basically, this project added capacity at the intersection. Some upcoming activities, well, let me say that we anticipate completion early spring of next year. Some upcoming activities include the Knots Neck Utility Work Detour. I know the burning question is, when will that be done? Looks like we anticipate getting that open in the next couple of weeks, probably the week of the 14th. And then along with that, they'll continue doing their storm drain installations and the curb and gutter sidewalk installations. Crittingen Road and Route 17 Realignment, that's basically a realignment project, recently got started. So far, all, all we've done there is basically the clearing and grubbing, and over the next nine months, you'll start seeing some more work. We're gonna start digging the pond and putting in underground infrastructure there. Nazan Parkway, Willroy, Overpass. Really like this project. We, up there, I say it's anticipated to open in August of 2025, and actually, We, up there, I say it's anticipated to open in August of 2025. And actually, we may get that open in the next couple of weeks. Progress on this project is going really well. And I forgot to introduce it. It basically puts a bridge over the, the railroad so that we no longer have to sit and wait for the, the long trains to, to pass by. So about two weeks. What's left now, we're going to be paving next week, installing the traffic signal that's at the bottom of the bridge. And then we have to get a, a bridge rating done on the new bridge. And then along with this, down the street is the Nazan Parkway over Beamie's Mill Pond Bridge. We started this and then we had to pull it back because of the, in conflict with school. But we are anticipating, and we're, this is kind of working with the previous project, the overpass. We didn't want to, you know, burden the system. So we wanted to try to get the overpass open to traffic before we push this out because this, this design requires a, a detour for the entire duration of construction, which is a year. So the detour path is, is showing up there. We are anticipating pushing the detour and beginning this. Actually, I have July 14th, but July 21st is a safer date so that there's no conflicts with the other project. Pewsville Drainage Project. With that, we installed a, a closed pipe system down John Street and also designed and dug a BMP retention pond. And this is also going really well. We're about 60 days out and I can, I anticipate completion of this project within about, I'll say by September. Nazan Bennett's Pasture Road Improvements, another good project. This project essentially relocates the entrance to the school from Nazan Parkway to Sleepy Hole. It moves the signal, the temporary signal that was there to the intersection of Sleepy Hole and Nazan Parkway. And it gives the school additional parking. Progress is going well and we anticipate completion of this by December of this year. Pitch Kettle Road Realignment. That project is currently on the bid board. Bid opening is July 23rd. And once that gets underway, we anticipate awarding it around September timeframe and then completion will be around May of 2027. Then I have a couple of bridges. The Freeman Mill Road over the Ivy Swamp. Actually, it is completed and opened. Pittman Town Road over Mill Swamp. We gave that, we started that in January and about a 12-month duration for construction. So anticipate opening and completion around winter of 2026. Some other projects related to transit that we have. We have a project to get us a couple of electric buses, which will actually be electric vans. There's, there was a procurement, an issue with the availability of electric buses. So we're going to get two vans and that's currently in, in procurement. The Transit Operations Center out on Carolina Road. We're, we're scheduled to bid that November of this year. Probably started around January of 2026 with about a 10-month duration for construction. So that should be open by, I'd say, November of 2026. College Drive Bus Pullout is a new project that will start in the next couple of months. And then the last two up there, the Transit Route to Windsor and the Express Commuter Route to Portsmouth allows us to purchase two additional buses, create routes to those two locations to get citizens where they need to go. And then finally, I will end on our ARPA projects. The first one up there, we have a project at Lloyd Place in Rosemont where we're installing curving. The work on Rosemont area is on South Fourth Street to Washington Street to the Dead End and we anticipate starting that portion in September. In the Lloyd Place area, we are currently working on plans for Willow, Halifax Bank Streets. And once we're finished there, we'll move on to North Sixth Street. Webb Street, Dill Road Drainage Improvements. The work on Dill Road, that has been completed. We're on the 200 and 300 blocks of Webb, Webb, Webb Street and we anticipate the entire project being completed by fall of this year. Bunch Avenue, Radandolph Street, and Marshall Avenue Drainage Improvements. The design is, is completed and once, because we're, we're doing this in-house with our crews. So once the crews are done at Webb Street, they'll move on to this location and then begin the construction there. And then the Webb Street with Dill Road was just a design And with that, I will pass on to Paul.
Thank you, Daryl. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. Start off with a recently completed project. This is sewer pump station number four. It's located in the Boston neighborhood. If you go down Lincoln Avenue and go right down to the dead end, it's right at the bottom of the, of the street there. Just replaced a very, a relatively old 1960s pump station that was having some issues. One of the challenging features during the construction of this is, as with most of our pump stations, is keeping the temporary pumping going while the station is undergoing renovation. Actually, very happy to say, because of our staff and the contractor, through some challenging wet weather events during the construction period, we didn't have any sanitary sewer overflows because of this. This station is one of our largest capacity stations, takes quite a bit of flow from the downtown area. Construction cost is actually a touch above $3 million. Under construction, Daryl finished just speaking about a few ARPA projects. This is our largest ARPA project. This is the Chukituck Borough Oakland Area Improvements. We started out with the water system improvements. We, you may recall that we had to, we did a boil water notice because we hooked the water main that went through the pump station site. Didn't realize it was there because the existing water system is so old. So right now, happy to say that that water system has been pressure tested, disinfected, and has been placed into service. Contractor has now flipped to concentrating on the sewer aspect, which would be the construction of the pump station, the gravity, mainline sewer, and then as well as moving on at the back end of the project, excuse me, to the septic conversions where we, the citizens that have elected to apply for that would come off their septic systems and connect to our new city sewer system. Completion is anticipated of late 2026. Also under construction, you may not get back there much to see this, but these photographs illustrate a huge change in what used to be out there. What I'm looking here is the dam that's between Lake I and Lake F. Parks and Rec would call it Butler Lake. So the reason this looks so much different is that top photograph, which is an earthen dam. It's one of our water supply dams, one of our two water supply dams that's, that we own in the City of Suffolk. Had quite a bit of vegetation, trees growing on top of it. So we went and cleared all that off. Contractor should finish this up in summer of 2025. During the construction, as he's gone through and he's renovated this dam, we found a couple of other penetrations through the dam that had to be sealed up fairly quickly. And then the contractor will go back in there with some bentonite mix and make a permanent repair on those penetrations. Also under construction, if, and I've included a couple photographs here just to show you the drastic change. This is Pump Station 17. It's in the Kilby Shores area. We're relocating the station. The station that's going to be relocated is the top photograph. That's a outdoor type station without a structure around it. It's been in, in operation for quite some time. The new station is down the street off of Tan Oak Court and the project includes some new gravity sewer running down to, to connect to the new pump station. We're about 85% complete on that, going very well. Anticipated completion date would be summer 2025 coming up here. Also under construction, this is Pump Station 62. This is not a replacement station, but the photographs there again illustrate that we, that big orange box that's sitting up there is a temporary pump where the, again, where that pump station's pumping features are all taken over by temporary pumps while contractors in there rehabilitating it. All new pumps, piping, electrical equipment. Completion dates coming up here, within the next month or two. Construction costs of this, just a little bit over $775,000. Under construction on the water side, West Port Water Pump Station. This is located off Holland Road. Now that they've done some clearing in there for the development, you can actually see this tank. For, whereas years past, you probably couldn't even see it through the trees. Now you can see it. It's one of our two, what's called a stand pipe tank in our system. So the, the construction upgrades at this station include some chemical feed system improvements to add ammonia and chlorine as part of our disinfection program out there to up the disinfectant, especially in the warmer months. We've also added some improvements there to take pumps out of there for, to, to maintain the pumps that are already out there. And then we've also done some disinfectant mixing improvements inside the tank. The, the bottom photograph there is actually showing some of the chemical feed pumps that we've added out there to add ammonia and chlorine at that station. Anticipated construction, completion's coming up here, summer 2025. Also under construction, and you may look at this one and you think, well, the construction cost's only $108,000. The reason this one is important, and this is Pump Station 14, it's a control reliability upgrade. Pump Station 14 is one of four vacuum sewer pump stations. Operates the sewer under vacuum conditions within the City of Suffolk. This adds backup control capabilities to this. When we went through an analysis of this about a year and a half, two years ago, we realized that some of the electrical equipment that operated this station, if it ever failed, it would have a very long lead time, six months to a year, to grab some additional equipment and install it. And during that time, while that equipment is being procured, we'd have to have a staff member out there manually operating this pump station on and off 24 hours a day in order to keep the sewer system from backing up. So we got ahead of the curve. We put something out there with a instrumentation and control packager. So for $108,000, we'll have a new controller out there that's a backup controller. Doesn't seem very interesting, but it keeps interesting things from happening in the bad sense of the word. Also under construction, and I know this is Gary's project at Downtown Library, but I just want to point out a couple of things on this. And again, you know, we're involved in the water and the sewer connection, working closely with Gary's contractor on this. This connection, especially the water one, required some extensive coordination with our staff to go ahead from months ago, to go ahead and do test shutdowns of the large diameter water main that's in front of City Hall here, just to see the impacts, make sure we could shut the main down. Once that was all determined, most of that was done during the night and during early morning hours. We had a contractor go in and cut a new tee-in that sat there with a valve on it. And then last, was it last week or the week before? Forget Gary. They went in and shut that street down for three days and made that final connection and brought it across the street. The sewer rehabilitation, there's a sewer that serves that building. We've decided to not dig that up, but rather do some rehabilitation to line the sewer. That's scheduled for mid-July of 2025. Also under construction, and again, I, this is a joint project, obviously with Public Works taking the, the lead on this. But I want to point out a couple of things on Holland Road. Our staff has been, spends quite a bit of staff time out there just making sure that our assets, and when I say that, I'm talking about our large diameter valves that allow us to go ahead and shut that transmission main down should we ever have a problem, are not paved over. So what you're seeing here is our engineering technician, Aaron Johnson, and he's out there during the early morning hours with other staff members and he's out there with our geo positioning system equipment. And he's taking GPS shots on valve boxes. So then we go ahead and put that in our mapping if we have to get back in there in the middle of the night. Or should somebody in the future pave over this valve box and we can't get there, we can go back there and fairly efficiently find the valve and shut it down. Also under construction, some smaller projects. These are the large diameter, large water meter replacements. And these are required, again, of some extensive coordination with businesses. Good examples of these are the, the upcoming replacement Unilever QVC. And we also completed one at Planters Peanuts. Under design, Cedar Lakes Drive Water System Improvements. This will replace a previous well system with plastic pipes. So this one will have new larger diameter water mains with new fire hydrants, a total resurfacing of the asphalt. We have reviewed the 50%, 60% design. That's going back to the consultant, moving towards 100% design. About a million and a half dollar project. Anticipated bid date is fall of 2025. Under design, Willroy Road 12-inch water main extension. This is Phase 2. Phase 2 picks up from the current terminus of Phase 1, which is at the Children's Center. This extends it down southwest to River Creek Drive. This does really two things for us. One is it provides a secondary connection to Old Mill Creek subdivision, which is currently only has one feed. So if something ever happened to that, we could backfeed it and, and keep water service to them. It also transfers water supply for the River Creek subdivision, which is currently on a lower pressure City of Portsmouth transmission main. So we will transfer those services. So those will be on our line. Estimated construction cost, 2.5 million. Just found out today that we just finished acquiring all the easements for that project. So we're ready to move ahead on that. Anticipate a bid, bid date, summer, fall, so next few months. Also under design, this is a joint project with, with Public Works. These are the Old Town Water and Sewer Replacements. So working with Public Works as they work to design some improvements to the storm drains on Pinner, Grace, and Holiday Streets. And while they're in there, we would get in there and replace the sanitary sewer, water main piping, as well as the water and sewer services. Also under design, this, this one you've heard about before. This is to replace a, a compromised section behind the Methodist Church. And then also, also a compromised section at the intersection of South Main Street and West Washington Street, compromised section of gravity, gravity sewer. We've gone and worked through all the property easements that we need to get there. So we anticipate hopefully bidding this thing in fall. So the idea here is the, if you remember from a past update, there's a sanitary sewer that runs very close to the foundation of that United Methodist School building. And our idea there is to go ahead and get a new water, excuse me, sewer line in place so that if the other one collapsed, we could get in, we wouldn't have to deal with that in the middle of the night. Also under design, again, another maybe non-interesting project. This is a system, this is a package of our next grouping of pump stations where we will go ahead and package up some mechanical and electrical upgrades. These are for a potpourri of six pump stations, Riverview, Forest Hills, the jail, Western Tidewater Regional Jail, Dogwood Estates, and Kilby Shores, Berkshire Meadows, and then also Pewsville off of Queen Street. I want to point out as I wrap up here, we also have in our CIP, this, I, in essence, some of these at this point are non-construction projects, but they are in our CIP. These are two programs that are required by regulations. So they're regulatory programs. The first one, you've heard me speak of before. This is our Regional Special Order by Consent for our sewer system. This is a multi, multi-component project where we seek to reduce infiltration and inflow into our existing gravity sewer system in order to prevent SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows. So those efforts include computer hydraulic modeling where we go in and we look at flows that run into our pump stations. We, we take a quarterly look at flows that go into these pump stations to see which ones have gone up. Maybe we're getting some rainwater, some stormwater in there. So maybe we have to go in there and then do smoke testing. We've spoken about that before, to determine if there are any defects in the piping. Then we go in there and we fix those. One of the things I want to point out on this, this has been a very successful program. The program started in 2007. If you look back at the statistics, it started in 2007 with 53 total sanitary sewer overflows for various reasons. Defects in pipes, maintenance issues, contractor hit the sanitary sewer line. Back in, now in fiscal year 24, we only had five SSOs. And most of those might be due to maintenance issues at a pump station. That's a drastic reduction. A lot of that has to do with the assistance that the consultant provides us in finding these things with the condition assessment. But the other thing I'm going to point out is, you may see our CCTV in our closed circuit TV van running through the streets. Our utility crew leader, Victor Arrington, does an excellent job with that. And what he's doing with that is we have a schedule to actually have him go in there. He cameras these sewers and he finds the defects and then he does a hotspot. He cleans those out. And he and his crew have been a huge part of reducing those sanitary sewer overflows. So Victor has done a excellent job with this program. The other regulatory program I'll point out, we've spoken about this in the past. This is the Lead Service Line Inventory and Replacement Program. is the Lead Service Line Inventory and Replacement Program. So, unless the current administration pulls back on some of these regulations, uh, starting in 2027, going out 10 years from there, we're required to replace all lead service lines that we know of within the city. So, right now, the status is, we just executed a purchase order with, uh, through our consultant that's assisting us with this. So, very shortly, you will hear from me about where we're going to get out there, and we have to do some test holes at various places in the city to ascertain what's on both sides of the water meter, the materials of construction. Is it copper? Is it lead? Is it plastic? What is it? That data that then gets fed into a computer algorithm that would predict which areas were likely to have lead service lines, and then we update our inventory. So, what we're working on now, really, within the last two weeks, we have some information mailers, I'll more than likely do a work session presentation to you about what happens with those when we send those out to these 300, 340 locations, where we're notifying those residents we're going to be in their area, checking to see what the materials or construction are on both sides of the water meter. And the test holes then would be expected to commence this summer of 2025. And with that, I will have a seat, and if any questions on any of projects, any departments, be happy to take them.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all four of the presenters that have presented a lot of information. Obviously, we have a lot going on in the city, and a lot of it's coming to fruition fairly quick. Um, I would suggest that maybe we have each presenter come forward in the order that they presented, so if I could, uh, get Gary to come up first, and I'll ask council if they have any questions or comments regarding his presentation, and we'll move on from there. So, council, have you got any questions from, um, for Mr. Jones? Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. Gary, thanks a lot for your presentation. I think, uh, a lot of good stuff was in there, and you stand, look like on the budget of, within budget of all of them. Congratulations, good job. Uh, but with the library, I know, uh, it's been about 25 years probably trying to get started, and now just about completion, and I know that is one star in your crown that you've been looking for and working hard for, for the last 20-some years.
Definitely.
And, uh, I know you're smiling now that this is finally coming to fruition, and I'm happy too, because I've been right along with you, wanting to see this happen, so congratulations on that. Did we get, we didn't get anything though on the, uh, Planets, not the Planets Club, yeah, Planets Club. Did you have anything on that?
Not yet. Uh, Planets Club is still have to go through, it's going to go through, um, you'll see something during the CIP discussions this year. We're putting together some information for that, so that's when that discussion will start.
Okay, because there are people still asking questions about...
Yes, it's still closed, it won't be open anytime soon.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Um, if not, Gary, thank you very much. I do have one, a couple of questions. Fire Station Four, I was kind of surprised that it's actually almost 20,000 square feet. I'm used to looking at that little one bay deal right there. So, obviously, that's going to satisfy any requirements we've got going on at all in the western part of, or part of the city. And will we also, is there also some type of, um, uh, resident, community, uh...
At this point, there's, you mean like a community room?
Yes.
At this, this point, it's not, it's nothing programmed in that particular facility for a community room in that, in that area.
Okay. And in regards to the Saratoga East parking lot, about how many more parking spaces would that create?
I'm glad you brought that up, yes. I was looking at that, we're in the process of early design, but we should be able to get another probably 55, 60 spaces there, once we reorganize that, that layout.
Well, that's significant. Between that 60 and the 40-something that we added, over by the festival park...
Yeah, between the library parking, the festival park parking, and that parking, you're looking at close to 150 new spaces.
Okay, and I think I have one other question. Now, I think it's concerning the Phoenix Bank Building in the East Washington Corridor, and this could be also Parks and Rec. Are we still talking about maybe doing a mural on the side of that building and a little park area?
Yeah, there's another, there's another, yes, there's another project we're developing out of that will be what's called the, right now, called the Phoenix Bank Plaza, uh, which will be immediately adjacent to the Phoenix Bank and may contain some component of a history component in it, as well as some additional parking, um, and some form of, some type of small plaza, undefined plaza space right now, but yes, we're in the process of putting together some preliminary design work on that.
Okay, that would be great, as far as it enters way into our city. Um, okay, council, any other questions or comments? If not, uh, Mr. Furlough, if we can get you up here, sir? And I will ask council if they have any questions or comments for Mark. Councilmember Rector?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Mark, for all the updates on all the projects that we've got going on. Um, I mean, as you know, one that's near and dear to me is, of course, the Lake Mead Park. It's been out of commission for a good while between the tear down and the, and the reconstruction and getting the equipment and whatnot, so, um, to quote our mayor, who used to quote, uh, councilperson, military, "I'd just like to see that proceed with all haste," um, and hopefully get that back open, because I do know that it's, um, you know, causing some spillover into some, you know, neighborhood parks, where they're just designed for the inhabitants of that neighborhood, but, you know, folks are going over there because they don't, don't have much alternative. But I, I know that y'all are working as hard as you can, and the splash park, it, will that be done at the same time, or is that going to be a completely separate component?
Uh, no, that'll be a separate component. Um, we'll, we're going to need some additional funding, so we're, we're currently in the process of looking at some, some potential grant funding, but, and we'll probably be coming back to council through the CIP process to request some additional funding. The pricing went up on that from what we were, when we originally, um, were getting some estimates for them to, to raise the funding, uh, to now. So, uh, unfortunately, we, we, we came up a little bit short.
So, I mean, if it's got to be incorporated as part of a CIP, so we looking at, at least another year before that's done?
Potentially, unless we can find some grant funding that's available between now and then. But, I mean, so, we, we, there is going to have to be some design that's done in that, on that, on that splash pad anyways. So, we do have enough funding to start on the design, so we're going to, the project is going to continue to move. Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been completed this year anyways. Even if we, even if you stroked us a check for the complete funding today, um, it just, we have to get some design work done, we have to, there's a certain amount of water flow that we need to the park, and we have to have engineers design the, the size of the pipe, the size of the meter, and electricity and everything like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Bennett?
Mark, on the, uh, boat ramp down at Long Star, not Long Star, at, uh...
Brady's.
Brady's, yeah. Uh, is that, did that, is on schedule like we had planned?
Yes. So, we, we're anticipating design to be completed by the end of this year, uh, sometime in, uh, or the first part of next year, and then it'll go out to bid shortly after that, and we're anticipating about a year, year and a half for construction.
So, we're not doing anything at all at the moment as far as the old area there?
The old what?
The old area where the boats used to park, because I can't get back, I can't tell what's, what's going on back there.
Yeah, right, there's, there's nothing being done right now, we're, we're, we're in the, the design and permitting phase right now. We're just working on design and permitting.
Okay. The other question, on the, uh, Holly Lawn Cemetery, the amount of money there, is that being used from perpetual care, or is that, where is that money coming from?
I believe a portion of it is coming from professional, uh, perpetual care, yeah.
Okay, because I know that's one thing we have had some issues with some time back about money being used, taxpayers' money being used for cemeteries. So, I just want to make sure that we are using the right funds for that.
Yep.
Uh, listen, is there anything else on that?
You want to say something?
Somebody can go ahead, I think I have one other, but I have to look through here and see what it was.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Uh, yeah, back to Brady's Marine real quick. I want to add that the Army Corps has funding to dredge the channel there, Brady's, and their dredging will happen in the summer of 2026.
26, okay. All right.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, so with the driver athletic complex, with the two baseball and the softball fields, are they designed for tournaments, big tournaments, or anything like that?
Yeah, they, they, they would be designed, they, it'd probably be a 300-foot fence, which is what we would typically do for, uh, tournament-grade softball.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I did, I see a question, because I was asked, on the, uh, Lake Mead tennis court...
Yes.
Lights going to be put out there, like we do at night?
We don't have a plan to add lights to, right now, courts, um, eight through, or seven through 10 have, are, are lit. We don't have plans currently to light any of the other courts right now. But se- seven through 10 do have lighting.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was another question I heard.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Mr. Furlough? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Lewis? Counsel? Questions for Mr. Lewis? Councilman Rector?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the Pitchkettle Road, Constance Road interchange, I know that they've, I guess they've moved all the utilities and whatnot, and now we're going to start with the actual construction phase of it, but I, they were doing some construction or doing some stuff out there. Somebody was just in the last couple of days, and I didn't know whether, is that related to this project, or is that something else going on?
I'm not aware of it being a part of my project, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't know who, who they were, what they were doing, but they were, you know, stopping alternating traffic going through Boston, um, it wasn't out for the last couple of days. The, um, the other thing is, on the Route 58, I know we're getting painfully close to completion on that. Is it my imagination, or is the paving out there just kind of going a little slow? Um, I always, you know, anytime I've seen paving projects going on, when they get to that portion of it, I mean, they're bringing in truck after truck after truck, you know, with the asphalt, because I guess there's some efficiency in paving a lot of distance at one time, but it, it just, it, it just seems like that's going a little slow. It, it, is that my imagination?
Nope.
Oh, good.
It is going slow.
Yeah.
A little disappointed with that, but yes, it's, that's what's happening.
I mean, is there any reason for it, or is there any way to, to speed it up so that we, we can get to that final finish line? I, I'm playing the role with Tim Johnson, because he's not here today, and I know he would be peppering you with a lot of questions about 58.
Other than continuing to have conversations with them, um, that's all...
Mr. Manager?
Councilmember Rector, they're also being assessed liquidated damages as part of the project. So, each day they delay, they get assessed, assessed.
Right. All right, well, uh, thank you for that. I, I, no, obviously, it's on a lot of people's minds, because they experience it every day, so...
Councilmember Bennett?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm always up, huh? All right, well, Daryl, I would like to thank you for your reports that you've given us on National Parkway, and, uh, so a lot of activity has been going on between Shoal Sea Road and, uh, Willroy Road, and now over to National Parkway. Uh, I'm glad to know that, uh, the bridge hopefully will be open, you said, in two weeks, fly over there at Willroy and National Parkway. That's going to be a great improvement to that area, and, uh, I was glad that, uh, changed closing the bridge down at, uh, down at Beamer's Mill until after that was open, because I was getting calls, and I'm sure everyone else up here just probably was getting calls every day about the traffic backup on National Parkway and Willroy Road and Progress Road. So, I think that's going to be a big, uh, big help with that. Uh, now, right there at, at National River High School, uh, when is that scheduled? I think you said in here, but look to me that, that intersection of Bennett-Pasha Road and Shoal Sea Road and the school, look like, I'm kind of like, uh, Councilman Rector, it's kind of look, moving a little bit slow with what they are doing there. That school will be opening back up in another couple of, two or three months.
Yeah, well, like I said, the entire project, um, won't be done until, I believe it's November, December of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Lewis? If not, um, quite a array of projects, several, I mean, when you look at 58 and the flyover just on its own merit that are coming to fruition, that's probably 100 million, 105, 110, somewhere in there, between those two projects, uh, that'll be huge improvements in allowing our citizens to get where they need to go. So, keep up the good work, keep it all ahead of schedule, under budget, we're good. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Rattell, we'll let you wrap it up. Any questions for Mr. Rattell? All right, Councilmember Vada Barla?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Paul, the, the big project at Lone Star, I get a lot of calls about that, what in the world is going on, and a lot of speculation, and I understand it's a dam, but can you just elaborate a little bit for me, so that's part of our water supply? So, I mean, just so I can communicate this better, because it just, you know, folks are, I think the biggest concern is the amount of trees that got cut, and again, I, I sort of understand, but if you can explain it more clearly...
Sure. Uh, good question. So, the, I'm going to refer them as Lake F and Lake I. Uh, Mark's going to correct me and call it Butler Lake and Lake Annett in the, in there. So, our raw water supply coming from the city of Norfolk comes down Godwin, comes up Godwin, and discharges right behind the fire station. You'll, there's a spillway there, and you can actually see the water cascading into Lake Annett, Lake F. That's connected by a culvert pipe to Lake I, Butler Lake, and then it's separated, that lake is separated from, uh, Chuckettuck Creek by the dam that's undergoing renovation right now. So, that's an earthen dam, it's not a concrete dam that you'd think, oh, Hoover Dam, not that kind of thing. So, what we're, what we had to do in there to repair or actually rehabilitate that dam is there, there's quite a bit of trees, vegetation that grew up in that dam, that DCR, the people that regulate the dams, will not allow. So, we had to go in there and clear that off. So, I, I get it that there was a concern, and it looks drastically different. You go in there and you go, whoa, I mean, what happened to all the trees? They're required to be removed, because that's a maintenance issue with the dam. So, then moving forward, it'll be our responsibility to keep that vegetation off the face and the crown of that dam. A couple of things that, you know, when we were working through the design process, uh, there is something called the Northern Long-Eared Bat that we had to go through and prove that they weren't roosting in that area, and even though we did, uh, the, I forget what regulatory body it was, was it DEQ? Maybe DEQ, wanted to make sure we were clearing in the right timeframe, so we did all that, but yes, that's what that project is. So, essentially, what it does, it's a terminal, Lake I and Lake F are terminal reservoirs for the Norfolk water that comes in. That water comes in, and then we have pumps there that pump it into the water treatment plant, and we treat it.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that, that helps a lot. Um, so, this, you can tell me if this is, this is not related or is related, so that there's a breach in Crane Lake, but does that have nothing to do with any of this?
Oh, the existing one that's there?
Yeah.
That, uh, I'm looking for some history on that, I don't, I wasn't here.
Yeah.
If I...
But that's not, but that is, I guess, you know, that's, that's not impacting our water supply, that that has a breach there too?
No, I don't, so that...
No, if I may.
Okay.
Crane Lake, Crane Lake is a totally separate lake in itself. Its breach is between Chuckettuck Creek and that lake. It's not connected to the reservoir system that's, uh, called to the east, that's the south of Chuck, Chuckettuck Creek.
Okay, so it's not impacting the water? Okay.
No, ma'am.
Good enough, thank you. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Rattell? Um, I do have one question, my hearing's getting a little bad. Was that a long-eared bat or a long-eared bat?
A nor- a northern long-eared bat.
Eared, not here, okay, I could, if it was long-eared or long-legged.
And I will, as long as you brought it up, we have, potentially, our other dam, which is also off 10, the Crump's Mill Pond Dam, potentially, we're going to get some grant funding to do a preliminary engineering study, and one of the questions I was asked two weeks ago was, do we have any evidence of the chicken turtles being present in that area?
Well, we'll say, I, I appreciate, uh, every now and then you coming up and doing, uh, these presentations in regards to utilities, because other, unlike the other three presenters, we get to see Gary's buildings going up, we get to see Mark's parks going on, and trees going up, and Daryl's roads, but very seldom does anybody see what the inner workings are of a sewer system and water, and it's taken for granted all the time. The only time I hear about water is how much they got in there. The only time I hear about water is how much they got in their ditch. So I, I appreciate what you do, what your department does, and it often goes unnoticed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, that concludes that portion of our work session. We're now gonna move to, uh, a discussion regarding appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At your city council's June fourth meeting, a motion was approved by city council to schedule a discussion for this afternoon concerning the process for appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The city attorney's office provided city council with information concerning other city, other localities' processes, and at this time, I will, uh, turn and, and flip the conversation to the city attorney.
I'll just add that, um, at your last meeting, I provided you with a memo that provided background for the current city code provisions regarding appointments and examples of the other cities in Hampton Roads for you to prepare for today's discussion, but this is really meant to be a discussion among the city council about whether you want to continue with the process that's existed since the consolidation of the city, or if we want to move in a different direction and what that direction might be. So I'll leave it to city council to discuss. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and just to reiterate and give us a little bit of an idea where we're going, uh, the purpose tonight is just for discussion. We're gonna try to address, everybody received the information, the background information, so whatever questions you have, whatever you want to discuss with the body, uh, is what we'll be doing as it relates to statutes, code, or policies that we have that are related to boards, committees, and commissions. There's absolutely no expectation or intent to pass anything this evening, nothing. All we're gonna do is talk about it, and by discussing it openly, then the city attorney will be able to review, uh, the content of our discussion, and then bring back to us for further consideration options at a later date that we'll be able to consider, 'cause they have to align with state code as well. So with that being said, I'm just gonna open it up, open the, open the floor to anyone who would like to address any of the issues, uh, that have been provided, any of the topics. And you can start, uh, Councilmember Butler-Barlow?
Um, yeah, since I started this, started us down this path, I'll go first. Um, and I have, I've, I've reserved the right to come back around, too. I hope this isn't my only chance. The first thing I want to talk about is the fact, and the letter that we got from the city attorney's office, it suggests that we need to amend or remove Section two dash thirty-six, because it's, um, repeated in Section two dash one six one. And I just wanna clarify, so it, in the original section, it says, board members may be removed, for cause, and I think in the, in Section two one six one, it says, uh, each member is appointed, the city council shall have the authority to remove any member at any time and appoint a successor. So basically, it's just, we have the ability as a council that if we feel like somebody's not doing the job that they were appointed to, we have the, we, we still will have the ability to remove them if we see, if, if we think that it's necessary. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yeah, so, sort of, it's a little bit of background for how we got into this particular situation. In two thousand fourteen, um, city council had a discussion similar to this, as a matter of fact, it was over several meetings, so having multiple meetings to discuss this is not unusual, um, when we go into this particular subject. But, uh, city council wanted to, um, change the dismissal for cause only to allow them the flexibility to remove folks from boards and commissions. And the provision that's in, um, that's in two dash thirty-six probably conflicts with state code. I went back and I looked today and, at the appointment statute, fifteen point two fourteen eleven, and in that statute, it says that boards and commissions that are created by city council, let me back up for a second, there are some boards that are created by code, EDA, Planning Commission, the Wetlands Board, and the Redevelopment Housing Authority. Because they're created by state code, they have removal procedures in the state code, and we have to follow those removal procedures. But all the other boards, committees, and commissions that city council creates, they are, um, those, according to fifteen point two fourteen eleven, the members of those committees serve at the pleasure of the governing body. So what was passed in two thousand fourteen matches with what's in the Virginia Code, what was passed in nineteen seventy-four does not.
Okay, okay. But, but in the end, so, so let me, a follow-up question on that, if we have the Planning Commission, EDA, Redevelopment Housing Authority, and Wetlands are, um, in place under state code, does that mean we can't remove those folks if we?
You can, you just have to remove them for the cause that's identified in the statute, and each one, each one of those boards has different language, because they were written at different times, and so the General Assembly used different language to define what is cause.
Okay, all right, so, but, but I guess the bottom line for me, and, and I'm not looking to, you know, get rid of a bunch of people, but, um, just that, that city council does have the ability to make those choices?
Yes, so if you find that a member, say, is being disruptive on a particular board, city council does have the authority to remove that member.
Okay, okay.
And it doesn't have to be disruptive, it can be they're not attending meetings or a number of different issues.
Okay, so that, that leads to a second question. So we have a seventy-five percent participation, do we enforce that ever?
So what I would, again, that was something that was supposed to go away. What I think happened is, this two dash thirty-six is buried up in the beginning of the city council provisions, which really you would think that that's all about city council organization, and so what was looked at at the time was the Boards and Commissions chapter, um, and it just got missed. And so all of that was supposed to come out, the seventy-five percent, the for cause, because really, you can now remove a board member for any reason.
Okay, so the seventy-five percent is not, nobody, okay, just checking on that. So there, there's also a history that, um, certain boards and commissions are borough-specific, so the only one, to my knowledge, that is officially borough-specific right now is EDA, um, but there were some before, and now they're not, and how did that, you know, tell, explain the history for me?
Sure. So when City of Suffolk first started, there, um, there was an effort, I guess because of the consolidation agreement, to try and keep things where you were, had all the people that served on city commissions and all the people that served on the county commission would all go back onto the same commission, and so they had assigned boroughs to different commissions. And in fact, at one point, the Sleepy Hole Borough had no representation on the Planning Commission. And then in nineteen ninety-four, there was an ordinance passed that made all of the commissions at large, and shrunk them all down to, or raised them up from five members to seven members, but kept the Planning Commission at fourteen members. And so since nineteen ninety-four, as far as I know, the, most of the committees, except for those that have, like the EDA that's borough-specific, but then there's a few technical committees that have identified people, um, like the, the Social Services Board, um, were at large, and they've been at large since then.
Okay, all right. So just going in a little bit different direction, um, so I, for one, and, you know, everyone, we've talked about, is sort of understood that Planning Commission positions are borough-specific, but that's, um, that's great if it's understood, if you're in the loop of people that understands. So I think as a person, uh, coming on to council, as a new member, um, it's, uh, you know, you're coming late to the party, however you wanna look at it, but if you've been around for a long time, and it's like, oh, all this is just kind of understood, you know, polite agreement, um, I just think that we need to clarify that. And that, that is probably not the process itself, but how we all interact as council members. One of the things I thought about coming into this session was, um, we have a requirement from the clerk's office or from the code that we have to have this information in by noon on the Monday, the week of a council meeting, and that's, that's fine, and, you know, I don't wanna change that rule, but I, I wish we could get the information even sooner than that. I mean, I wish we would have, you know, a week or two of lead time, um, when we're making, especially, I mean, some of these, all of our boards and commissions are important, and I wish they all functioned at a higher level, but, um, I think it would be, um, good for all of us to communicate better about what we're thinking about and who we're thinking about and what kinda nominations we're getting ready to make, so just throwing that out. I did wanna say, in the, all the information that you, you sent us, William, that what other localities are doing, I really like the idea of an application process. Um, I think we saw it work really, really well, um, for the downtown advisory committee, and I still think council members should endorse a nomination, um, but I think that it might get us a, um, an interesting pool of folks that are really interested in volunteering with the city, and might give us better, um, better choices, and certainly more choices, um, when we're trying to fill some of these positions. And with that, I'll let somebody else talk until I have something else.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. Uh, well, I guess being the old guy up here on the dice, I'll just give you a little bit of background, the history, I'm like Councilman Miltier now, going to history lesson, I guess. But the way it, we had been set up, and I know it's not, uh, specific by borough and a lot of the board appointments, but it was always wherein that, uh, you all, well, it was changed wherein that we had seven council members until we elected mayor at large. That gave she or he the opportunity to appoint people to the Planning Commission, the Housing Authority, well, that's really why some of the boards have eight people that's there. So it didn't have to be a person from that borough per se, but it gave that person that represent that borough the chance, uh, opportunity to put someone, uh, on a board that represent the people that, in that borough, that, uh, the council person, uh, represents. So it has worked well. I haven't had, I don't think, I don't recall of a problem ever, uh, with that. We've always had wherein a person had to do an application. I don't know of any time we just put a person on without filling out an application for an appointment. You always had a resume and all that when a person, uh, wanted to be appointed. So, uh, as far as, we did have a thing, just like the attorney said, at one point, we were actually having boards to send us a letter notifying us if people were not attending meetings. So if they were not attending meetings, then the board, I mean, the council we're looking at, well, if this person has not attended meeting, then may, they are not feel, fulfilling their obligation, then we could go ahead and take that person off because they're not fulfilling their obligation. And I didn't say it was a requirement, but that was something that we looked at to make sure that whoever was appointed to a board were gonna be there to serve the time that they were supposed to be there. So overall, I think that, um, the system is not broke. Uh, I think it, I think everybody, I don't feel like any one of us should have the opportunity to have two or three people appointed to a board, or tell, and somebody else doesn't have the opportunity, the same opportunity, that's my point. If I go and appoint three people to any board, then Councilman Barlow might have a person that she want to appoint, but the position has already been filled, because you've already been to, to lead in taking all the positions. I think that's wrong. I think every council person sitting up here on the dice should have the same opportunity to have representations on those boards as anyone else. So I'm gonna stop right there for right now, but if I need to come back, I will.
Councilmember Rector?
Thank you. Um, Councilman Bennett, as usual, I want, stuff like this where history lessons are important, um, I, I think you nailed it, and the key thing to me that I think that you said has to do with communication, and combining both the, your comments along with Councilperson Butler Barlow's comments, um, I think communication about the whole process is probably lagging significantly, because it's, you know, the commissions and the boards, for the most part, kinda operate a little bit in the background. And to Councilperson Butler Barlow's comment about the application, I wish there was a way, and I'm pretty sure we can probably figure out a way to do it, to where these boards and commissions and the positions that are available and the, the duties, uh, that are incumbent upon somebody that gets appointed to that commission can be communicated a little bit better. I know that if you go to the city's website, there are the boards and the commissions there on the left-hand side on the government, and you can pull up the different boards and the commissions, um, but I'm not sure it goes into a lot of detail about whether the board, uh, positions are completely filled. Um, I know that when I looked at a couple of them, when I was doing some of the reappointments for this meeting, that, um, the records and the board members and whatnot is not completely up to date. So I, like, like I said, I would like to see, 'cause I agree with Councilperson Butler Barlow, I, I think there are a lot of people that would like to serve, but they don't really know about the opportunities that we have to serve. So I think if we can push the communication a little bit harder about what is available and what board, uh, has open seats, then I, I think we might actually be, you know, hopefully get a little more input, um, from people that would like to serve, 'cause, you know, some of these boards are, you know, exactly what they do, it requires somebody that's got a specific interest. And, um, let's see, Mr. Hutchins, going back to the boards and commissions that are dictated by the state, where to remove an individual from that board, it has to be, quote, for cause, are, are there bylaws of those boards? Are they, the, are the causes specific enough to where, you know, you don't get into a thing where somebody is wanting to remove somebody just simply because maybe they didn't like something that they said, or they don't like a position that, that they may have taken at a meeting, or whatever, and are, are the rules cut and dried, or are they a little nebulous?
It, it, it depends on the board and commission, but generally, when you remove someone for cause, they have due process rights, which means that you need to give them notice of the, um, complaint against them, and they have an opportunity to, um, respond to that complaint. So, for instance, if the Wetlands Board, if the city council member felt that a Wetlands Board member had violated whatever the code says is a cause for removing a Wetlands Board member, and they brought a motion before city council, the motion would have to be to give notice of the charges and allow that person to come forward before city council and have a chance to defend themselves. So it's not a, I don't like this person, so I'm gonna make up something, and then we just get rid of them, they've, they've got to have due process rights. At-will does not require due process rights, because there doesn't need to be a reason for the termination. I think the, the biggest reason why there are particular boards that have for cause is because they serve sort of like you as a quasi-legislative body, or they're a separate, municipality. So the EDA and the Housing Authority are separate municipal corporations with their own responsibilities, and they act separately from city council. So it's, city council has, runs the risk of interfering with their business by being able to willy-nilly get rid of members that, when they don't like the decision they make. The Wetlands Board and the Planning Commission are reviewing and issuing permits, as well as giving you advice on different things involving land development, so they need to have a little bit of autonomy to be able to make decisions and not be able to be removed just because of one or two things that somebody might say.
Uh, Mr. Hutchins, I got a question for you. I know we're running short on time, and we've got some closed session, um, topics that we have to discuss, 'cause they're part of the regular session. Can we continue this conversation during the regular session by motion to do so, or do we have to table it?
So you can. So you can, you can either table it to another work session, or at your regular session, when it comes time to adopt the agenda, make an amendment to add this to your agenda, under new business.
So we can add it to the agenda and continue the conversation?
Yes.
Now, does that require a vote now of council to proceed that way?
At this point, no.
Okay, so we can just add it to the agenda, it just becomes part of the presentation?
It would become under new business, it would be discussion under new business.
Okay, so we'll discuss it under new business?
Yes.
Okay, well, I suggest that's what we do at this point, because I know we get a lot of discussion, a lot of folks haven't had an opportunity to speak yet, and the hour's getting late, so we'll go ahead and do that. And with that being said, that concludes our work session at this moment. We do have a need for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees in the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Sister Cities Commission, the Southside Network Authority, the Southeastern Public Service Authority, the Suffolk Clean Community Commission, the Suffolk Clean Community Commission, Keep Suffolk Beautiful Executive Board, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, the Planning Council, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Regional Jail Authority Board, the Western Tidewater Water Authority, and the appointment of an interim city manager.
Council, a motion has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Richter.
So moved.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Richter. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor Bennett, excuse me, Vice Mayor Ward and Councilmember Bennett, can you cast your votes, please? Okay. Great, thank you very much. The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 P.M.